Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 28th, 2023 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'm going to call the meeting to order and, as usual, open up by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other meetings, all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Announcements, Ed and Brian, you said you had none?
I don't have any.
I guess I would just thank the DPDW for the, you know, job they've been doing. We've had a couple weird storms and then today like an actual real snowstorm, which I didn't even venture out of the house, but I'm assuming the roads were good. They were good on my way here, so thank you to them for that. I guess I would just add, the only announcement I have, we didn't have a meeting last week, but last Tuesday night, I went to South County ambulance and had a meeting with their governing body. And it was just very interesting. It was just to kind of, they sort of wanted to explain how their system works. We talked a little bit about how it got started and, you know, they were honest about it being a tough, tough road for a little while and how, you know, how the structure might work if they started covering Hatfield. So it was really just for, it was just for informational purposes, but it was, it was interesting to hear about the service. It's a, it's a good ambulance service. I actually rode in in that last year when I had the car accident. It was, yeah, it was South County that I rode in and they were very good. So, so just met with them and it's, it's, the governing body is Select Board members from the participating town. So some of them I knew, Jonathan Edwards from Whately and Carolyn Shores Ness from Deerfield are people I know. So it was a good meeting. It was interesting, interesting to get information. So just, just so townspeople know, you know, we're sort of educating ourselves about some of these things. So that's what I was doing on our night off.
Thank you. Yes.
Is anyone here for public forum? So we have some minutes to approve. I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2023 meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain simply because I wasn't at that particular meeting.
Then I'll make a motion to approve February 14th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
The Valentine's Day minutes.
The Valentine's Day meeting.
I'm still hearing about that at home.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the first order of posted business tonight is we are welcoming the Heritage Tavern in to talk about an application for an entertainment license and an auto amusement license. Did you want to come up to the microphone? How you doing?
Good, good evening.
So we have these applications. We had them last week and we did have some questions. It looks like, have these been amended?
Yeah, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
My first go around.
That's fine, that's fine. We just, you know, we want to, we, we, as a board, love to support our businesses, but we also want to be, you know, mindful that we're being consistent and taking the neighborhood into consideration, so.
Of course.
So these, I mean, these look in order to me.
I think.
Just for town, sorry.
No, you're going to do what I was.
For townspeople's sake, the original request that we got last, last meeting, I think, was for 2:00 AM, 1:00 AM, 1:00 AM. It's now been adjusted to 11:00 PM, which is much more reasonable.
Absolutely agree.
Yeah.
I think, I think the original application was just to follow the, the guidelines of the restaurant and bar itself, whereas this is more for the entertainment, which is what our question was all about.
Right.
So thank you for, for looking at this.
Live music would be on weekends.
Weekends, yep.
Until 11:00. Karaoke would be weekdays until 10:00 and weekends until 11:00.
Correct.
So nothing past 11:00 is basically the.
Yep.
Well, it's actually going to be nice for, you know, townspeople to have that as an option.
It was a big call for the DJ trivia to come back, so that has to happen.
Excellent.
So I might as well just go through my questions, just to get it in my head. We'll start with the jukebox. I assume the jukebox will be inside the building.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's, that covers that question. As far as karaoke, are you planning something outside or only inside for the karaoke?
Inside, I think, is appropriate at this time. If I need anything else, I would certainly come back, but inside only.
And then would the one-person band or small bands, is that something you're planning, outside or just inside?
We'd probably do a little bit of both, but it would be light acoustic and again, within the parameters of being good neighbors and not going past 11 o'clock.
So I, I know in the past, when another restaurant in town, when they wanted to go outside, we did have a meeting with the neighbors just to have them express their feelings about outside music, just to make sure everybody was happy with it. That's the only input I want to make on that.
Yeah, there's some houses, you know, pretty close.
I would add, where we're planning to put the patio and any kind of outside entertainment, there was a big barn that would, that's right next to us and one of the residents next to us actually works for us, so and the only other residents are in close proximity, right next to the restaurant. So that's pretty good and really being cognizant, of course, of folks across the street and surrounding.
Does the current license, though, the current alcohol license include that premise or area that you would hold the outdoor music?
It does, the patio area, correct.
Just wanted to make sure. It's going to be nice to have that extra patio space.
Yeah, outside, nice touch, though. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, great.
I, I like the idea. I want to support you, but at the same token, it seems to be fair to get the neighborhood to at least have an opportunity to say if they like it or don't like it maybe. That's, I'm not, that's what I'm thinking right now.
I'm thinking we'll know if they don't like it.
I thought that's what this was for, that they were invited.
Well, I don't know if all the neighbors were, were all the neighbors notified about this.
No. At the last, at the previous meeting, I don't think you had elected, I mean, you, you can, you have that option. Board has that option.
Could, could I make a suggestion?
That's fine.
So my suggestion would be to perhaps approve what we have here for the license. And as the plans unfold for expanding to outdoor seating and dining and entertainment, maybe at that point, we would adjust the existing license, which would be for indoors only at this point, to include outdoors. And we could do it via a hearing so that people could come and have a conversation with us. Does that, does that seem fair to everybody?
That seems fair if it's inside now and then on expansion, we contact the neighborhood to get.
Yeah, I mean, you won't be doing anything outside now.
When we had, we had discussion about another outside event, another establishment with an outside entertainment venue. How did that come about? Did we do a meeting on that? I thought that they reached out, the, it was already happening and the butter reached out after hearing it.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was to expand the liquor license to be outside and to have a patio built.
Oh, so there was a hearing.
So that, that is why there was a.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I can't remember. It seems like a long time ago.
It was, there hadn't already been, because it was brand new, it didn't include.
They were expanding the license premises.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I didn't remember how that worked out. Okay. Are you okay with that?
It's a major problem, but, and I think you have no problem getting it through, but it's still, I like the idea, we do inside now and then if you're going to expand, we at least give the neighborhood the opportunity to come forward.
I agree.
Not exactly a lot of outdoor music happening these days.
Right, right. That's why I figured it would be, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the application for the entertainment license for live music, one-man shows, indoor karaoke to be held indoors no later than 11:00 PM.
Sounds good.
Is it just one man?
Cover everything.
It might be like one or two people, but light acoustic, what's always been there.
Well, I'm just reading what it said for the type of entertainment, but live music, one or two piece.
Okay.
And karaoke.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that.
A motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck. How's it going?
Yeah.
It's going, it's going, it's going well. We're getting to see some people that have been there a long time, that have known many previous owners, so it's been a delight to get to know a lot of the people from the town.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so the next item is a request from the Hatfield Cultural Council.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. Did you vote to approve the jukebox and karaoke machine as a separate application?
It's a separate application? Then there needs to be two votes?
So there's the application for the entertainment license and then there's an application for the automatic amusement device and jukebox.
Okay, so I will make that motion, although my, my original one did talk about karaoke.
Oh, it did, okay.
But we, we can clarify it. So I will make a motion to approve the automatic amusement device and jukebox license application as presented.
Okay, second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marlene.
Now you're, you're good.
Now you're good. I wouldn't necessarily consider karaoke live entertainment, but people are standing up, but, yeah, it is, but that's.
Depends who's singing.
Then there's the karaoke machine.
Nobody would want it to be me, that's for sure.
Or me.
Really? Mr. Music Man?
Piano's okay, vocally not so much.
Okay, so the Hatfield Cultural Council is requesting holding a music event next door here in Smith Academy Park on June 2nd?
Yes, they were, someone was going to represent the Cultural Council this evening and then a conflict occurred for them. So I understand that this is for a, yes, it's, it's a band that would be performing and.
What's the date?
We don't have any.
June 2nd.
Anything on it? And this is, isn't that graduation? It's graduation night for Smith Academy.
Oh, thanks, so it's a Friday.
It's a Friday night.
Friday.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure that it would really conflict, you know? I mean, both events would probably be looking to use the church as overflow parking, so.
It's just that there are people interested in coming to this concert and they, you know, have a son or daughter graduating, you know, it would conflict, but yeah, they, it could be a low turnout possibly.
Well, I'm not so much worried about that. I'm just worried about that you have two competing events. There's not much parking down here.
Right, right.
And so usually when there's an event at the park, that church lot fills up and certainly graduation night.
Oh, it does, oh, I didn't realize.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
The church lot fills up for events here.
Oh, yeah. And then graduation night, that church lot would fill up too, so parking might be a little tight for both events. What do you think, Dave? I mean, because you're a little more familiar with graduations recently than me.
I believe most of the time, I don't know how big the class is this year.
23.
But definitely, there's definitely usually overflow parking at St. Our Lady of Grace for graduation. But I don't know, my first thought is maybe the Cultural Council wants to reconsider because it is graduation night. I don't know who their, their group is or how much flexibility there is, but two events going on in very close proximity that might.
You know, I'm just thinking that, I don't know who the band is either or what, what the occasion is. I, I'm just thinking that I would think the majority of people, given that it's not, well, I don't know who the band is, so I shouldn't say it that way, but I would think most people that are coming to the concert would start parking along Main Street on both sides, not so much necessarily, not so much to the church.
I think they do, though. I mean, the concerts I've been to, people are parking at the church and down that way.
So I, I, I think I'm leaning towards approving it, but we may want to tell them that, you know, in the meantime, and then if, if both events are happening, then I think they may want to talk to the church or have somebody, you know, I don't know. I don't know how big an event, we know how big the Smith Academy graduations are. What we don't know is who the band is and what the draw is going to be. But I think from a, from a noise perspective, they're far enough apart that that's not going to be a problem.
Oh, that's not a problem.
And I'd hate to say no because there's another event happening that is also a popular event in town simply because it's the same night. Because I, I would also think the band is already booked, whatever they're doing, the band is booked for that night. So it might not be simple to change it.
It is indoors.
The last time, you know, with COVID, they did have it outdoors.
Last year was indoors.
Yeah, right, it was last year, but so I'm assuming that that's.
I mean, according to the class president, I have an inside scoop there. She hasn't mentioned anything about an outdoor graduation, so I think it's just a status quo inside graduation.
Put the air on.
Yeah. I guess maybe because I'm going to graduation and I, I know, you know, a lot of families and everything, you know, it might be nice if the, the people at the concert, if we, if we somehow make it known that priority parking should be for the, you know, for the class, the Smith Academy class at the church.
I think that's a fair accommodation.
You know, and I don't know who would have to be in charge of monitoring that, but it is a small class, but you know.
But you have relatives.
Yeah, all the relatives, all the kids.
Townspeople like to go to it every year.
The other kids go, I mean, you know, it's always packed. It's always packed. So, and it's definitely worth letting them know, the Cultural Council know, because I'm sure they just have no idea.
I agree, we let them know that the graduation, maybe they, maybe they already know about it, maybe they overlooked it, but.
Right. And maybe they'll say, oh, we do want to change it.
Yeah, they may.
So, you know.
They may want to consider that.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the Hatfield Cultural Council's request to hold a music event in Smith Academy Park on Friday, June 2nd from 6:00 to 8:30.
Now, that's another bit of a problem, though, just to, for the sake of further discussion, because graduation starts later than 6:00, right, David?
Usually so.
Yeah, so that means everybody's coming in for the concert an hour before graduation.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So now you could have people trying to go to graduation who can't get parking. I, this, I think it's a little concerning, not just because I happen to have a student graduating, but I would feel this way regardless. I mean, that's a big night for these families and there's nowhere else for them to go to park.
Well, could we put a stipulation in that the Cultural Council has to put some signs up at the church that parking is only for graduation?
It would be up to Smith Academy to do that, in my opinion.
Yes, Smith Academy should coordinate the parking with the church.
Put a person there, put a person with his thing.
The signs won't make a difference. Nobody will do it because of signs. Nobody's going to, if, if they, if, if there's, if the school makes arrangements for somebody to be letting people in that parking lot, then I guess I'm sort of okay with it.
Then we make the school aware that there's going to be another event so that they can make arrangements.
Maybe we should encourage the school and the Cultural Council to discuss this. So I, I would say let's hold off on, on approving it until we know that there's a plan in place for that.
Just making noises. I, you know, I, I'm just kind of torn, right, that we're a small community, so the good news is we know what's going on with other events. But really, the two have absolutely nothing to do with one another, except for potential parking. So, I mean, what, how, however, how is this going to happen, not only this event, but in the future? If there's two things happening at the same time, how, I mean, where do, where do we, where does the Board of Select, where does the Board of Selectmen like sort of draw the line or, I, I mean, I don't know. I would suggest that the Hatfield Council, the Cultural Council, if you could call them tomorrow or later this week and say, here's the deal, that's the night of Smith Academy graduation.
That we just suggested and then they have to consider.
Who's the band? What, what is this for? Is it just, you're just having it? Is it a fundraiser? Is it mostly?
It's one of their cultural awards, you know, they receive money allocated to the town for, for events, for them to schedule events and it is.
I guess my point is.
They have a projected number of people, I mean, it's not like, right, it's.
Is it a swing band? Is it a rock and roll band?
Or is it trailer trash or what?
Rock and roll band.
That's my point.
It's a rock and roll band.
So where do we?
They attract, you know.
I know it's a rock and roll band.
Everybody should be made aware of it. I think at this point, everybody should be made aware of the two events and the two event holders need to have a conversation about.
Sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Julie mentioned the name of the band and I didn't print her email out.
Augustin Rust.
Thank you.
And they do Neil Young.
Neil Young. Oh, wow.
A whole night of it?
And I think he says.
Hey, I saw Neil Young in the concert. If I remember correctly, 6:00 to 7:30 is the time she's.
6:00 to 8:30.
Oh, 6:00 to 8:30. Where'd I get 7:30 from? The, the start time is concerning for me because it does sort of preempt graduation. This is, I just think, I think we should make everybody aware of it and have them have a conversation about how this might work.
Anyways, I can see both, both of your sides, so, and holding us off until the next meeting's not going to affect this event.
I'll follow up with.
You're not going to be doing promotion or anything between now and then.
I'll follow up with.
And then we'll make a decision at the next meeting and give them a chance to talk to each other and figure something out.
I mean, maybe like there's a way that the lot can be sort of closed off and someone's there letting families in.
Let's get the church's approval. It's their lot.
I know. They need to be part of the conversation as well, right? We all just assume everybody's just going to use the lot, but everybody does.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize that. I know the parking lot fills up back here and on Main Street, parking for the, for use of the park for concerts.
Oh, depends what the concert is. I mean, there was some big ones and it was all packed. It was probably, people were parking probably at Smith Academy and walking here.
Wow.
When we had, there was a couple there that were really big. It seemed like such, it seemed like such a simple, your motion.
I withdraw it.
So you're going to withdraw it, yeah.
Well, you're both looking at me. What side do I take here?
He's withdrawing his motion.
Okay, if you're withdrawing, I'll second that, okay.
Topic three.
All right.
Topic three.
So are you, Ed just said he would second the.
Second, withdrawing it.
He's just withdrawing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, okay. Okay.
So we'll put the parties together, is that?
Including the church.
Yeah, yeah. Eventually, I think we need to, I think that the, we need to talk to Julie and find out what the scoop is.
I will follow up with her tomorrow.
And then, okay, more to follow.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's too bad she wasn't here. I had suggested that, you know, because I said, you know, the board does encourage people to come because they may have questions. And I said, you know, you certainly can postpone this.
This board always has questions.
Postpone this, there's still plenty of time, but she didn't want to postpone and I said, well, I'll speak on behalf of it, but if there are questions, then I'll follow up with you. So looks like questions there, I will be following up.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. All right. Next, just a, a quick update regarding the comprehensive plan. The committee continues to meet once a month. There has been low attendance at these meetings and I just, you know, I just felt it was important to point that out and just.
These are appointed members to this committee are not showing up?
These are appointed members to the committee and, you know, this project is funded by a grant and I just would hate to jeopardize, you know, the town receiving the money because if the committee's not able to meet, we almost didn't have a quorum last week. So I have reached out to the Board and Committee Chairs and encouraged them to follow up with their designated member. You know, maybe they need to, if that individual who's currently appointed has a conflict, if they can appoint, recommend someone else on the, on their board for appointment, we'll move that forward.
If I could, Marlene, and you and I talked about this yesterday. So the comprehensive plan update is the new terminology for the town's master plan, just for anybody who's curious as to what they are. But that's, that's the, that's the 2023 version of, of the town master plan, the name.
That's right.
That's all.
So.
Thank you.
If anybody's interested, the Agricultural Advisory Commission and the Comprehensive Plan Committee is hosting a Farmers Roundtable Discussion this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here in the conference room. And farmers are encouraged to, to join that meeting and that's to discuss strategies for building farm resilience and adapting to increasingly unpredictable weather patterns. Comcast license renewal update, I think we talked briefly about this at the last meeting and John and I had a, a conference call with Attorney Sullivan and he is working out some of the small details of the contract with, with Comcast. And actually, since this update was added to your packet, I had submitted a couple of recommendations to Bill Sullivan. So it looks like, I saw this morning, there was an email from him that he's communicating with the Comcast representative and, yeah.
Excuse me.
Very soon. And one last item I have in your packet is a conflict of interest disclosure statement. And I thought it was important to, for this individual, Sean Robinson, who is, he's the Council on Agent Chair. He represents the Comprehensive Plan Committee as COA representative. Before he was even appointed to the committee, when we were developing the town's application, municipal vulnerability grant application, we built in money in the budget for food and we wanted to be certain that we used our local businesses. And one of the businesses is ServiceNet. Sean is employed with, with ServiceNet and involved in food management. We are not communicating with him directly when placing orders for food and it's another individual, but just thought it was important for this disclosure statement to be.
Well, I, I think it's important to note too that in this particular instance, it's not as if we're using Sean's restaurant and Sean is making money off of it. ServiceNet is an organization, so whether they have business or not in the culinary doesn't affect Sean's income.
Right.
So to me, it's a little different than if we were buying things from Sean's restaurant, right? It's.
Right, he does not have a financial interest.
He does not have a financial interest in this.
But he is filing the disclosure statement.
Air on the side of caution.
I think he's smart to do that, but he doesn't, right, he doesn't, right, okay.
Those are the items that I have for now.
But I think it's awesome we're using them. Love that idea. Okay, so, hello Finance Committee?
Hello.
Everybody had the week off? Yeah, here we are.
Is David doing it separately from?
David's making a presentation to the Board, Select Board.
Well, it's good the Finance can.
Capital Planning bylaw states that recommended list of projects is submitted to the Select Board, but the Finance Committee's here too, so they'll be sure. board, but the finance committee's here too, so they'll be sure.
Excellent. Mr. Kier.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, David.
Hi, Dave.
Hopefully everybody has a copy of it. I sent it to Marlene and so hopefully it's been distributed. We had a very nice committee this year. It was, I was elected chair again. I had Mrs. Zinal, I had Mr. John Wilks and Mr. Adam Sullivan from the school committee. We're still missing another at-large member, so I'll make a plea again on camera. If anybody who would like to become part of, you know, some service to the town, it doesn't take a lot of time. We only had three meetings this year because it was pretty simple. In the last couple of years with all the requests and all the money that was spent by the town, whether it was the free cash or the ARPA, you know, the last couple of years, you knocked a lot of stuff out, which was, was really good. So this year, the requests were not humongous. They weren't too overwhelming. You should have it all.
No money to spend really, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I don't, you know, we'll see what the final number is, what you guys can do with it, but there's some, there's some good legitimate projects on here that, that should be looked at carefully. And we know it's going to be a tight year all the way around on the budget. You know, so hopefully also if there's, if there is a consideration for an override, that there's things out here that.
Excuse me.
You know, could be considered for that as well in different departments. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions anybody has, if anything's unclear. Tried to give you a fairly clear list and the, and the narrative that I, that I put down there. John can certainly speak to any and all of this and so can Diana because they were part of it. So when you guys get really digging into your budget process and putting it all together, they certainly can, can do that. I know there's a, there's a, the police cruiser I think is on there because of, you know, the request, the request to add people to the police department and there's some other things that are, that are on there based on what departments want to do as far as their budget is concerned.
And there's some projects on here that would be able to access CPA funding.
Absolutely. There are a number of those, yeah, the pickleball courts.
Do you want to just run through the list for the sake of townspeople?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So the town clerk has some, has asked for some money to do some preservation of birth records so that, because she's got those in her safe, but I think they want to do something to bind them or preserve them so that they're not in any danger. We gotta, we do have a, I think it's $29,000 for that, what you were just talking about, the climate smart comprehensive plan for next year, because there was a, we got a grant for that committee, but there's a matching piece of it, so that $29,000 needs to be appropriated to continue the work next year in FY '24.
David, can we backtrack to the town clerk records? That would be eligible for CPA funding.
Yes, yeah, that's possible, yep. The, the new truck that's coming in for the fire department, when it was ordered, from what I, from what the chief reports is, there was sort of an increase in what they thought it was going to be, of course. So the, he left off some, a couple of pieces of extrication equipment out of the bid that went out, so he's hoping it's a 15 or $16,000, I believe, cost to, that would totally make sure that new truck has everything it absolutely needs.
Is that a second Jaws of Life or is that something else? Extrication equipment?
It didn't really outline exactly what the, what, what the pieces were in his narrative, but yeah, it could be, it could, I don't know if it's Jaws of Life or it could be other pieces that would attach to the same piece of equipment that the Jaws of Life works on, you know what I mean? Could be rams or something like that, I don't know.
And it can't come off the old vehicle? There doesn't exist on the old vehicle?
I guess it doesn't exist on the old vehicle, yeah. Because it's all, I mean, he's getting all new stuff, so I don't know if the old stuff and the new stuff would.
Be able to.
Yeah, would go together. And who knows how old the old stuff is also. Laptops for the ambulance and two fire trucks, the laptops that are used to do incident reports and look things up and that kind of stuff. I think that laptops he has are from 2002. And they're, they're, whatever Windows operating system they're using is like kind of obsolete, so. Additional cruiser for the police department, obviously, because he's asking for additional DPW would be shade tree replacement along Main and Elm Streets, which the CPA has approved for, for next year, as well as an initial study about looking at improvements at De Pond, the pond that's behind Smith Academy that is used every year for the fishing derby. Seems like that thing is getting full of weeds and other kinds of things I think they want to do at some point. This is again, another CPA piece. And there's a, there would be a second phase based on what the initial report says. To finish, the Elven Court Building, which is, which the DPW is in process of, they've already spent, I don't know, 90 something thousand, I think, to get it going and they need to, there's some money that they need to finish that for next year. And then a milling head for the skid steer and a brush cutting attachment, which would be that sidearm brush cutter. They've, they've always borrowed him in the past, but I don't think that, I think the towns are not really more, as, as willing to let people use their stuff as, as they used to, so.
Well, there used to be one that a multiple town shared. It wasn't one town that they lent out, it was a multiple one.
Okay, so I don't know.
But you were also held to, when it was your turn to use it.
Exactly.
Use it now because it's going to the next community afterwards, so.
Phil would also like to see the forestry management plan for the watershed, to see about, you know, logging off some trees and things like that up there to keep that in good shape. The lease program that was put in last year is, I think it's $51,000, will be, is included in Phil's operating budget for this year, which will cover all the vehicles that we bought last year. I mean, we're still waiting for the council on aging man to come in, I believe. I don't think that's come in yet.
It just came in, I think.
Did it? Nice. I know the cost of that went up significantly than what they thought it was going to be once it was bid, but Phil asked for the replacement of the pedestrian bridge over the Mill River to, as a, he wants to keep it on the plan just in case something comes up, if grant funding comes up for something like that, or if CPA would be willing to do part of it. So he wants to keep it on the plan because, you know, because I think he kind of has a, what do you call it, a dig ready?
Shovel ready.
Shovel ready, dig ready, whatever.
Shovel ready. So last year, this was on the plan and CPA had questions, they wanted more information.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he's done that, what he's, if he updated them or not, so. Mini splits for the second floor here in the town hall and irrigation for the Smith Academy Park. I don't know if any of you looked at the Smith Academy Park last summer when we were in the midst of the drought, it was like brown instead of green for much of the summer. So he would like to try to make an improvement out there to make that look nicer. Then the schools have a, have quite a list. The first, obviously, is their roof repair and replacement at Hatfield Elementary School. They've presented it as a three or four-year step. We're going to do this part this year, this part next year, this part the following year to try to get it all done.
Overall, it's.
Overall, it's over a million dollars to do that and this, it doesn't look at all like the school building assistance program is going to have any interest in funding that. In fact, I guess they've raised.
I think they moved the goalposts.
Right, they moved the goalposts from 20 years to 30 years or something like that, so. That, it seems, everything seems to be okay there now, but who knows what's going to happen down the road.
Still feels like a new school. It's kind of hard.
Yeah.
Hard to think about replacing that roof, but it's not a new school.
We're just getting to the 20 years, right?
It's 20 years, yeah.
Yeah, so. They want to replace a bunch of the original carpeting in a bunch of the classrooms at Smith Academy with carpet tiles. Some of that carpeting up there is original to that building, which is 40-plus years old.
I sat on that carpet and learned.
Diana went to school there. Well, you went there when it was brand new, though.
I went there when it was brand new, yes, but I'm saying it was the carpet I was, you
One of the boilers at the Hatfield Elementary School is in some serious need of replacement. They've spent a bunch of money trying to keep it going, but the bottom line is it needs to be, needs to be replaced. The HVAC upgrades at Smith Academy are more not boiler room related, they're more controls in each classroom and things like that to upgrade things to try to control heat better, heat and cooling better, so that it's not, you know, there's rooms up there that are always too hot and always, some of them are always too cold, and so they're looking to do some upgrades of some of that kind of stuff to help the, the system function better. Hatfield Elementary School, the gym and the community hall exterior doors, I want to say it's about a $30,000 request to replace those. They're sort of bent and out of shape and they're, a lot of, they're not very energy efficient right now because of the, of the, of the shape they're in. There's a request to do a gym floor repair. One of the things we talked about on the committee.
At Smith Academy?
At Smith Academy. They only requested a very small amount of money. I'm not sure what they're going to accomplish with the little bit of money that they've asked for, but if they say.
Thought they just resurfaced that.
If they say it's as bad as it is, well, we've got this, we, I showed the committee, we got this map, there's, there's a map of the gym floor and it has about, I don't know, 50 or 75 X marks on it, that they say there are dead spots in the floor. I talked to the boys' basketball team and I said, hey, how's the floor? Is it a lot of dead spots? What are you talking about? So I, I don't know what's, what's going on, what the whole thing is.
Didn't we just redo that? Well, I was on Booster Club, so.
There was, time goes by fast, so I don't know, there had, there was one full sanding of that gym floor and replacement of all the lines. And all they did was put all the lines back and all the center circle back exactly as it was.
Right.
But then they revarnished.
That was probably, that was like eight or 10 years ago.
No, really? No, I think it was since sadly was there.
That's 15.
We brought in a separate company to do it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It was a, it was a, like, bring it down.
Yeah, I think Dion or somebody like that came in and did it, but.
That might even been more than 10 or 20 years ago.
Yeah.
I thought that something was done there.
They do the, they do the, they do the varnish or the service every, every year.
Oh, okay.
So that gets, that gets done by the custodial staff.
This is an actual, take it all off, sand it and.
I think, I think what they're looking at is possibly pulling up boards and fixing things underneath and putting boards back. I don't know. That's sort of what I hear coming out of their mouths, but they've only requested $36,000. So I don't know how much work you can actually do for that, if you're actually pulling boards up off.
Well, then you're going to have to, I would imagine, part of that process would be at the very end.
Absolutely.
Now go back and redo everything, so. What's, I mean, I have no idea what would be underneath a gymnasium floor.
That gymnasium floor, I, I went to my, my resource to find out exactly, my Ms. Sherry Webb, who was teaching here when that floor was put in. That is a cement slab. It has, so let's say the, the boards go this way, they have stringers that go opposite.
Makes sense.
And what they did was they fastened it on each end and they took these wedges and every one or two feet, they tucked them underneath that stringer, so it kind of lifted it up off the cement.
Yeah.
So it wasn't totally on the cement, so it had a little more give than it would have been sitting right on the cement.
Excuse me, right.
So that's what my sources tell me was, is underneath there.
And that's probably what's giving in certain spots.
Some of that stuff might be wearing out, yes.
You know, you always wonder if they take a few boards off, right? What, what they're really going to find. At that, at that point, it might be a whole thing.
I asked, I asked the boys, I went to their practice one day and I asked, when this came in, I says, well, I'm going to just go do some research. And I said, how many gyms do you play in where the floor is worse than yours? And they went, hmm, hmm, hmm. So I don't think we're in, I don't think it's terrible.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something that can be.
Yeah.
That looked at more down the road, but yeah.
Thanks, David.
That's where that is. Mr. Wood wants to continue to look at the, the front entrance to the building and the main office, security and doing some retrofitting and making it a little bit more, the main office is not really that accessible for those who have disabilities, especially somebody in a wheelchair. So he's looking to do some, some changes there.
You also have to, you have to go well into the building before you get to the office.
Yeah, it's, the design piece on that is a little.
I mean, it was designed in a completely different time, that's all.
Exactly, always a little, always a little baffling to me that you didn't come right into.
To an office.
Where someone was actually watching people walk through the door.
Yeah, I mean, but it wasn't, I mean, David, it was.
And of course, the parking lots, they've also proposed a three-year project to do part of one parking lot one year and then part of one and a part of another in the middle year and then the rest of the other one in the third year, which you'll, you'll see outlined on the, on the plan. The numbers add up to a pretty big, pretty big chunk of money. That was the other thing I asked Phil about was, you know, the cost of, the cost of asphalt with, with oil these days and he, you know, I said, how are you going to do your 200, you know, your, what's, what's your 240,000 that you put in for to do whatever street it is? He says, they ain't going to cover it now. He said, but there is, I guess there is some talk about raising the chapter 90 funds a little bit because at the state level, they are conscious of the cost of those things and you're not going to be able to do as much these days as you would have in the past. So maybe there's a hope that some chapter 90 money would come in, because he's looking at instead of 240,000 on some of these streets, going up to about 400,000 to do some of the work that he wants to do on keeping our roads in decent shape. And of course, chapter 90 money is only to be used for fixing your streets and roads. You can't use it for parking lots like the, like the schools.
Yeah, I mean, and some of what, when they talk about increasing transportation funding, don't forget a lot of times that's other things, RTAs and, you know, whatever, but I have seen about chapter 90 and chapter 70 specifically maybe getting increased. But the governor's budget comes out next week.
Correct, yeah.
No, tomorrow.
The governor's budget came out last week. The governor's proposed, oh, it came out last week, yeah. Because I've updated the cherry she rings based on that.
So that's where we are. You know, there's a lot of things, obviously, it's a five-year plan and some, the fire department has given us a little bit more than a five-year plan, so I have, I still have that. It's, I didn't print it on this page because it goes off the page, so, but there's a few things down the road for them. The pickleball courts is another CPA funding thing that they, they met with the, with CPA and CPA is willing to help them. I guess it's just a matter of if they can find a site. And so I don't know where the rec department and/or the folks involved with that are as far as confirming a site or trying to confirm a site, but. There is, the CPA is willing to fund, I believe it's $158,000 for, for that.
Sounds good, thank you. And thank you for the, for, to you and in the committee for the, you know, the kind of the breakdown of what's a priority. I mean, that, that really was helpful to.
Thank you for serving on the committee again.
I enjoyed the process. I actually was sick for one of the meetings, we only had a few meetings, but I, I enjoy the capital planning process every year and hopefully we can find an extra member this year.
Yeah, and as far as the comprehensive committee, I will, I apologize, I missed last Wednesday's meeting, but it was, we had Western Mass basketball tournament this past week and Wednesday night was a big night as the tournament director for all of Western Mass to be out and about watching games and doing that kind of stuff, so I did miss the meeting, but.
David is expected that from time to time.
Knowing that, you know me, you know me, I'm.
But you've been at the other meetings.
Probably be the last time I, I miss unless something happens, but I don't take, I don't take that role lightly and can get, so I do have to find out about the meeting Thursday, though. I didn't hear about that yet, so.
I don't know what the turnout is going to be at this point, but.
I'm going to, I'm going to email Stephanie.
But I don't think it's the comprehensive plan is coming, they're just, they're, they're hosting it, but they're not going to be here holding it.
Okay.
It's the ad committee that is.
The ad committee's doing that?
Ad committee.
Yeah, this is the farmer's roundtable.
It's not, okay, it's not this comprehensive committee doing it.
It's not the comprehensive. Comprehensive plan, so agriculture, agriculture is a component of development, yeah. And John Pease has been wonderful.
John Pease is, yes, he's, he always says he's, he's representing two, sort of two boards at this point and so.
He's been excellent with the consultants we're working with.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you have any questions for David?
Something comes up down the road, don't be afraid to get, don't be afraid to ask, I'm not that far away, so.
Thank you, David. I actually, it's really a pleasure working with you on that committee.
Thanks.
Just pulling the budgets out here for what we're reviewing. Okay, so assessors are first. Did I have, is there-
The assessors had, didn't feel that it was necessary to meet, it's a, their, their budget is, you know, level services and no, there aren't any changes to their budget.
Perfect.
That's what we like. And we appreciate them being able to do that, so.
Hello, Kyle.
Hi, Kyle, come on up to the hot seat.
Whatever anybody wants to do.
She may be a little bit longer, she may be a little bit longer.
Up to, well.
Yeah, up to Kyle. He'll be here a while now. Did you hear that, Kyle? She, Marlene said Patty will probably take longer than you do. Do you wanna change your mind? Okay.
Hi, Patty.
I don't, do I have, I can't find the collector treasurer one. Um, you should have a copy right there. Um, it wasn't part of your budget packet, we just received it last week.
Oh, yeah.
It's a debt schedule, oh, you should have other pages.
Yep, it was in our, um-
This one.
Yeah.
That's just debt, but then there's the treasurers and collectors expenses and wages. And there's tax title and, um, no, I don't think I have that, unless, was it in this big one? Cause I didn't see it in here.
You don't?
No, just the spreadsheet-y thing.
I just, yeah, that's the one I have.
I know that it was sent out electronically last week, um.
I have Lorie's, I know, I, I never print that stuff out, cause usually it's here for us, so I didn't print it.
So let me go make copies of that.
So if we're getting copies, do we wanna do, Kyle?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Is that okay with you, Marlene?
Yeah, that's fine. I will go make copies of that. I have it.
Yeah, I do have it.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, I, you know, you're welcome.
So Kyle's here from the, uh, Building Inspector, Inspection Services.
Yep.
We have your-
You'll see an increase in my budget because I'm wanting to go to online permitting. So we've contracted with Full Circus Circle Technologies, uh, for online permitting where the residents and contractors will bill, go online, make out and pay for their permit. And it has a system where Patty will see it also to make sure, um, you're not issuing, uh, permits to people that are in tax default or. So it's a good system. I've worked with it quite a few towns. And then, um, the only other thing is, uh, the wages on the alternate inspectors and so forth. I, I bumped it slightly because, uh, they tend to do a lot of extra inspections and then put in for them all at once. So the money should be well-covered, there's no deficit there, it's just, uh, they needed to be raised a little bit.
Seems legitimate, I mean.
Yeah, the permit fee, permit fees are always pretty good in this town, pretty consistent. Raising them up a couple of years ago was a smart thing to do. Electrical has just been increased, uh, because we're kind of wa, out of whack on electrical fees, so that, that helps pay for the guys and, uh, they, they have tablets now that when the online permitting comes out, they'll bill at log inspections from wherever they are. Better communication.
Right, and the online permitting is what we had approved previously for the initial, um, rollout of it, if you will.
Yeah.
And what's on here is, is the yearly, um, fee.
Sure, the yearly maintenance fee afterwards, yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with all of this. I don't personally have any questions. I don't know if anyone else does.
Everybody good? Thank you.
That was easy.
I know.
Thanks, Kyle.
We really tore you to shreds, Kyle, didn't we?
You did a good job.
Thanks, Trudy and Phil, this is for Ed.
Oh, Ed, a couple more. Ed, you missed a couple. Okay, we're back, um, after just a short break to have some photocopies made. Patty, it's your turn here. Which did you want to start with?
Start at the first, the tax title expense. Most of it's level funded.
Is that?
That's the second page, if anything, maybe. OPEB was on top.
OPEB is on top, okay. Yeah, tax title.
You can jump around, Diana, wherever you want to start.
It's up to you, it's you, you're-
Doesn't matter, OPEB's the same every year, isn't it, sort of?
Yeah, tax title doesn't-
Yeah, we started funding that last, in this current fiscal year. So tax title was much higher last year. We, we, we put extra money to that.
We did, mhm.
There's a lot going on with tax title right now, a lot. There's a lot of, you know, taking of parcels and-
Parcels last year, yeah.
Houses and people are in them, so there's a lot of messy that we're in the middle of, so.
That's a revolving fund and so the board had to vote to-
Right, we've collected quite a bit and it goes in.
Okay, I mean, for the sake of people watching at home, tax title is homes that are in arrears on their real estate taxes and the town's efforts to correct those situations.
We take it and title and then, then it has to go to land court and then land court has to approve it. Hopefully they solve it before we take it. We don't want to own anybody's house.
Right.
Or take anybody's land.
Right.
But sometimes we can't find people.
Can we foresee a problem in this fiscal year with that 15,000 being sufficient? Is that 15,000?
Oh, no, we've already spent over 20.
Oh, okay.
But I think it gets subsidized by, we'll see what we need. As I said, we've got a couple really hot ones right now, so we should have a, a better understanding in the next few weeks where it is.
Excuse me.
What do you want to look at next, Patty?
County retirement. So that is a fixed cost, you can't do anything about it. That's based on what they assess us. So the only option there is that if we make the one payment, instead of breaking it into two, we save 13,700, which is always what's been done and no reason not to. So it's 825 this year compared to 764 last year.
Okay.
If investments perform better next year, maybe it'll go down. I mean, you're, you're fully funding, you know, you're working towards fully funding the system.
Right.
And so some of it is based on actuarial estimates of how long it will take to fully fund the system based on your current, you know, your retirees and, and, you know, how does your investment perform? Cause you have a significant amount of money invested in that. You know? It's in the market, you know, there was, you know, it's fairly conservative approach, but yes, bonds.
Expensive, though.
Okay, next.
Unemployment.
Level?
20,000. That was through January, we only had seven, but we're starting to see a couple of claims come through. So we never really know where that's gonna end up. It all depends on who's here, who leaves at the end of this, it's usually school year if people, whatever happens at the end of the school year.
Group insurance?
That's the big one. So 6% rate increase this year. Haven't seen an increase there in, I think, five years. Um, there was actually a decrease in that five years, but other than that, it's been, so this is the first increase, so it's significant.
Doesn't get any better than that.
What's that?
It doesn't get any better than that. No, I can't imagine anyone else has had a fi, a decrease in health insurance costs in over a five-year span.
Right.
Honestly.
So it's a correction?
Well, and, and, you know, they're definitely using trust funds to create that decrease, but.
They're seeing a lot of costs with COVID, they said, and different things that have happened. They said the medical is up, so they needed the increase.
And that didn't hit the, in the previous years?
No, I think it starts to catch up. I mean, I think they absorb some of it and then I think it gets to the point where they really start looking and then it gets bumped.
In prior year, I mean, especially if you go back more than, I mean, I haven't followed it in a couple of years, but if you go back prior to that, they spent money out of a trust fund to art, artificially depress the cost. So you didn't, there were actual, you know, there would have been actual cost increases, but they were absorbed by using savings from prior years essentially, so, you know, you can only do that for so long.
Right.
A few years ago, Marlene and I sat down with, um, someone from GIC to look at if it was worth it for the town and it wasn't at that point, no.
There's no way it can be, I mean realistically.
We looked at it and it's going up almost 5% every year.
Well, the, the, the thing is that the, the trust that you're in gets to cherry pick who it takes. So people can apply to this trust, this, this, the trust has actually people from all over the state in it. People can apply to the trust and then they do an evaluation of what their experience is. And if their claims experience is lower than that of the trust on a whole, as a whole, then you could be accepted. But if your experience is higher, then they don't let you in and GIC has to take everybody.
Right.
So it's virtually impossible for them to be lower, you know, it's just, cause just the way they function. One group is taking the low-cost people, you know, you can look at how, the age of the people and the, everything, and they don't have to take you, so.
And if they take you, they take you on as, and look at you for a certain amount of time and then they can even kick you off.
Yeah.
And somebody else has Maya and that went crazy, someone else had Maya Insurance and that was like a 10 or 12% increase.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, and, and actually, the longer they can keep taking people in, the better off you'll be. Because they're always taking people who have, who have lower claims than you do as a whole. So it keeps drive theoretically, if you kept taking better and better people in, it would keep driving the cost down and down.
Medicare. We can probably bump that down to maybe, I'm still waiting on another number, maybe 106, 105. I think we're gonna come in at about 102 again this year and that's with one less pay. Last year, we had 27 pays, this year's only 26, but I still think it's gonna come in about the same.
So your expenses?
Treasure expenses, just level funded. I think we're gonna have to look at, I don't know if the band fees come out of here, but there's gonna be, um, I have to still, we're in the middle of the, there's a band coming up for that mini pumper and there's also, we have to do a band for what we have so far with the 12 million dollar wastewater plant. So we already have cost against that and we have to borrow for anticipation note until we can get to a certain point where we can borrow and get a bond again. So interest rates are higher with the bands, um, it's gonna be interesting to see. It was only 2.5% last year and the, it's like 6,000 dollars, so it's gonna be, we're gonna start seeing it.
And the software licensing is way down, that's just-
That's because of the change where they were doing Tyler and they co-ran it. And now we're gonna not have Tyler. I think we'll still have access, but we won't have support.
Anybody have questions? And then collectors' expenses.
Yeah, I think we can get away with level funding it.
Salaries.
Same as what they currently are until they decide. No change compared to what's currently being paid. Same on the collector's salary. And then OPEB. I guess that was started, was that last year, I think, was the first year you put money in?
Yeah.
So it's always good to continue. And then we get to the loans.
Excuse me.
Just, as I said, a big work in progress right now while we, you see unauthorized on issue, the big one is that wastewater upgrade improvement. We're gathering paperwork now, there's a lot to be done. And the mini pumper, I think the chief said it's coming in in May, so hopefully we get our things together and we'll figure out what we're gonna have there to borrow.
We have some debt coming off. The North Street Sewer, the-
Yeah, there's four.
Grip conveyor.
It was-
Town Hall Garage.
Town Hall, yeah.
Not Town Hall Garage, Highway Garage.
Rotating Biological.
Contractor.
The grip conveyor, the sewer, the North Street Phase Two, the Highway Garage Repair and the fire truck. This year was the last year for-
Am I not seeing them on here?
Um, you don't have the entire workbook, the budget workbook, this is just debt that, what Patty has here is debt that we are incurring in the next, okay, next fiscal year.
But you, you will see the, the first two, do show fiscal year 24 coming off, I think, the Town Hall renovation, so there's two of the four.
That's two more, that's two more, I'm sorry. There was four that came off in FY '23, the grip conveyor, the sewer, highway and fire tanker and then there's just this one final year on the, um, the other two. The Town Hall renovation and the rotating biological contractor, this will be the final year, FY '24 is final. And then there'll just be the one still going for seven years left on the wastewater gravity thickener.
Town Hall Phase One coming off.
There's plenty below.
Oh, I know.
And then we refinanced everything that we can, right? That was part of those bond issues from last year.
Yeah, so that's why you'll see everything together there, all the debt exclusion there.
Yeah.
You'll see the bond on the left. You'll see the bond on the left.
Does this funding mechanism make a difference in the rates that you get? So if it's on a debt exclusion versus
I don't know that, honestly.
Neither, I was curious.
Yeah, I don't know.
If having a dedicated revenue stream would, you know, make it less risky.
Good question.
In theory.
Yeah.
Really, then, you know, after those couple come off and there's one, the fire truck is, another fire truck is coming up in 2027, that's quite a while with everything sitting around there.
Yep. Always has the green with you.
Anybody have anything else on that? Are you doing Lori's? The accountant one or no?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So
Thank Patty.
Yeah, thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
The accountants' budget is level services currently, although I have knowledge that, and I will be meeting with them, they're trying to set up a meeting later this week, but it may have to get moved to next week. They're proposing a contractual increase. I don't know what that amount is at the moment. But the overall budget that was submitted is, yeah, level services. There was a little bit of a reduction in license, licensing for software. And again, that's because we're no longer paying for Tyler's support.
So maybe an increase will, there's a little wiggle room in there for a slight increase in what I'm seeing here?
Oh, when you look at the bottom number, that, yeah, I
Very little.
Yeah, very little.
Well, you'll keep us posted on
I think, yeah, we're going to have to sit down and take a look at the contract that they're proposing because this contract will be with Markham.
Right.
Right.
No longer Melanson CPAs and, yeah, I think you could see some significant changes.
Well, that would be too bad. I mean, would it be worth re-bidding it maybe? They'll have to That's One step at a time, I guess. Okay.
Yeah, if, you know, you would like to continue outsourcing accounting services or possibly look at hiring
Doing it, yeah.
any house accounting. That was almost suggested to me indirectly. That's probably what we should be doing.
Well, I can't speak to now, but the problem last time in the past has been, this is such a unique, municipal accounting is such a unique type of
It is.
accounting that the, in the past, there's been a small pool of candidates
And that's still true.
if any, to, so, so, I mean, we certainly could, could look into doing that, but
The good news is we only need one.
Pardon me?
The good news is we only need one.
Yeah, right.
So if you find somebody who's good, then, yeah.
Right. Yep. Yeah.
Well, let's wait and see what they give for
I should know by next week, he said.
Right. Yes. And I will, I will send out an email letting everybody know.
Thank you.
I just, what I'm distributing here is revenue reports that I just received last Thursday from the accountant. So turnovers are posted through the first week of February. Tax receipts are posted through the first week of January. I haven't had a chance to go over the revenue with Lori. I'd like to do that just to see, you know, in comparison to last year at this time, where we are at.
Yeah, I mean, there's no comparison
There isn't, no.
here, it's just, yeah.
So are they keeping up with things? For this to be just through the beginning of January and it's almost March.
Right, right.
Were we having an issue with?
Well, there was turnovers, I understand, during the month of December. The receipts, they were, we had been, I guess, scanning them or sending them out copies in our weekly warrant and then, I don't know, lack of communication and they, all the receipts for December didn't get turned over timely. Those have since been submitted to the accountant. My own personal sense is Melanson has now become Markham. I know the accounting services that provide, they've, they are serving other municipalities. It's grown the last few years. Lori's the only accountant and I think it's become a challenge for her to, you know, they are looking to take on another accountant and they have hired some, you know, clerks or junior accountants, but they need someone who has the ability to be an accountant and I don't think Lori can possibly handle all the, they have, I think it was, is it six of Patty's left? I think they have around, somewhere between six and eight municipalities now.
Holy what?
Yeah. Yeah, they picked up quite a few.
Well, it brings us back to, because there's no account, there's few accountants to be hired, potentially, but, you know.
And the last scenario we went through over the years, we know there's a shortage of municipal accountants.
Yep.
Because that's a whole different field from accounting.
So when, when it was Melanson and they took on Hatfield, we were their third municipality at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
Put out and add and see who we get. Then decide, you know, like, I mean, that's the only way to know, is to try to do it.
You never know, right? A lot of people have retired lately.
Sometimes timing is everything.
Maybe, you know.
We don't want to go back to
No.
No, we do not.
But, you know, but that doesn't mean, you know, well, we've had varying experiences with all different methodologies, right?
Yes, true.
Tried it all.
Yeah, we tried it all and experience varies.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think it would be in our best interest to, to, you know, conduct a, a search and because, you know, what if the town decides, you know, we don't, we're not happy or we don't want to accept their conditions of their contract or they could, they could just, the other way around, they could say. And, yeah, I think they've already done that with the towns.
I think it's, I think it would make sense to Sean's point to, you know, maybe send a feeler out there. Nothing ventured, nothing gained, right? I mean, you know.
Also, is there another accounting firm that does municipal? If it's that lucrative, there's got to be another firm out there.
Yeah, I don't know and I'd certainly be glad to, to look into that. There are agencies that provide temporary services, but we don't want that.
Yeah, well, probably, you know, most of your bigger municipalities are probably going to have a department.
Right.
You know, with a couple of people or three people, whatever, you know, like a
I mean, do you, have you, do you notice, like, in the Beacon, are there a lot of listings for, I'm not thinking you have time to sit around and read the Beacon all the time, but
I know, and to be honest with you, when I used to get it in the mail, I used to browse through it. Now it's sent out electronically
Oh, you don't even, yeah.
No.
Because that was, would have been kind of a good way to gauge if you're
I haven't looked at it since it came in paper, I don't think.
I'll make a point
In the paper.
Yeah, I'll make a point of looking at it. It's just the number of emails that I get.
I know.
I just don't have time to get to it.
Right, I get that. Okay.
Yeah, I think it certainly would be worthwhile pursuing, see what's out there.
Sure.
See who's out there. Shouldn't say what's out there. Who's out there.
And that would be for July 1st, so you have a little time.
Yeah, but I want to get started on it right away, seeing that we are going to be entering into a contract or negotiating a contract with
Well, and by the time you advertise and you interview and then there's notice, you'd be looking at that timeframe anyway.
Yeah, but you probably should decide, like, May, you know, who, if you wanted to hire somebody, because they're going to need to get notice.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
March 14th.
Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, so March 14th, the Select Board and Finance Committee?
Sure.
That's the, okay. And then if something should come up between the 14th and the board needs to meet, I don't think there, there will be
I mean, you can let me know. I just, it's, next week is going to be pretty impossible for me to do any
We shouldn't need to meet next week.
town stuff.
So this
I mean, if there was an emergency, yeah, let me know.
And the second meeting in March is, was to be the 21st. Do we want to keep that? So that would be the following week, following Tuesday.
Sure, and then maybe take the 28th off?
Okay.
Or, I mean, I have to see what's happening.
Well, when you say the 20, yeah, all right, well, let's see what's on our
We'll just have to
But we need to let these guys know.
Yeah, they, I know.
The 14th for sure, I guess, at this point.
Just reserve our Tuesdays. When we sit at this table, we just, yeah.
So we had set our dates up through April, I believe. So March, it was, it was supposed to be March 7th and 21st.
For us.
For, right.
So we'll do the 14th and the 21st.
Okay.
Then we can see if we need the 28th.
Is that okay? Is that, is that okay with everybody's schedule? John and
It's fine with me.
John, he's going to be away
Yeah.
He's going to be away March 9th through the 13th, but that doesn't affect us.
The 14th works, right?
But you're back on the 14th, you're coming back on the 13th, right? Yeah. So is the 14th, 14th, okay?
I'm purposely coming back, so
Oh, wow.
You didn't know that. You didn't know that until tonight.
So the 14th, all right, so we do not, we do not have a meeting currently on that night.
I already covered that.
As long as we're not meeting on March 17th, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We know better, Brian.
Valentine's Day, okay. St. Patrick's Day, off the table.
Well, that's a corned beef day.
That is, yes.
Okay.
Corned beef, there, that's it.
I'm sure that's why Brian looks forward to it, for the corned beef.
That's right. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, and I'll second that motion.
A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Sorry, I'm just looking at my calendar, you know, making sure I've got it.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be on the part of the record.
Okay, okay.
Aye. All those in favor?
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye. Thanks, John. Thank you, Karen. Thank you.